I'd like to call to order the December 7, 2021, regular meeting of Mentor City Council. I will give the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom and a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent. Pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, a free, democratic, public, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberating, just as for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Approval of minutes. November 16, 2021, work session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-076.
An ordinance providing for appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Mentor, Ohio, for the period beginning January 1, 2022, to and including December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the adoption of the city's budget for the upcoming year, and I'd ask the Finance Director, Mr. Malinowski, to make a brief comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Members of council, this is the 2022 original appropriation per the two work sessions, budget work sessions that were held. It comprises 54 funds, including the city's general fund, the operating fund of the city. And it, comparison to pre-pandemic levels, this totals $131.5 million. 2020's budget was $134.1 million, so it's right on par. I recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-076 is approved. Ordinance number 21-0-077.
An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, May 2021, as amended by adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, Mr. Landik. I believe this is Mr. Zeeman's update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, this, as you know, is periodic updates to our codified ordinances. Some of these replacement pages, you've seen already via enactment of local code. The rest of the balance of these updates are really to harmonize our local code criminal and traffic with revisions to the Ohio Revised Code. For that reason, I would encourage council to enact this.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marne.
We've been dealing with this position now, even with my conversation with Mr. Donovan, who's been on council for eight years, and we've had five different individuals take part of this position. And several months ago, I suggested to council that we look into going into a new direction with this particular position. Whether it would be with our full-time clerk, having it be a flex position, which it basically really has since October 12th, it's over a dozen times where people are leaving early, coming in late, which is fine, weekends making up, which is fine, the work is done, it's done excellent, it's done A-number-one. So it's proof right there, it's already been done as a flex position. So now here we are back to square one again, going to go to a full-time, we're going to extend the pay, now the talk is going to a full-time position, which we haven't got together in an executive session and discussed this, all together as a body, as we're supposed to, because it is a council employee. So when we sit down here after break, beginning of the year, I'm going to go back, and I'll have everything available, and I want you all to do some homework, too. Take a look at your emails, think back about how this has been since October 12th as a flex position, and there's a number of different ways that we could do with this position and move forward. As I mentioned in our last meeting, at the budget meeting, every one of these departments have undergone drastic changes, drastic in the last three years. From Mr. Zampetro, I saw him, like, I brought him in the meeting, plowing snow outside of City Hall, Assistant City Manager, to Community Development, I know they need extra help there, we just have another retiree coming up, Mr. Decker, I wonder if Jim's last day, by the way.
He's gone.
He's gone, all right? Okay, so he's already gone. So we have multiple positions to fill, we've got people doing two, three times the amount of work that they used to do years ago. It's time to look at this hard, get a good direction of this, and make different changes to our structure. Thank you.
This is a reminder, this ordinance is a reflection of the difficulty to find good help, basically, and does not address the full-time or part-time status of the position we're trying to fill, it does just extend temporary pay increase for the clerk of council.
But it is part of it, and that's my point.
Yes. Any further discussion? Counsel, it's your pleasure.
We have to continue our vote.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Landik. We have a second, we have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
No.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to amend? Amen?
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
And we have a second?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-078 is approved. Ordinance number 21-0-079.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, President Landik. Again, this might be the Finance Director's show tonight, I'm going to defer to him on this one, and there is a tweak to this ordinance as well, and Mr. Malinowski, if you could explain further.
Thank you once again, Mr. Zampetro. Members of council, this is a cleanup ordinance, primarily it affects the current year appropriations. Firstly, there is an authorized temporary cash advance to, from the city's general fund in the amount of $777,066, and that's going to a CDBG grant fund, and also the Brooksville Road Reconstruction Fund that was awarded recently. In Section 2, there are numerous, several appropriation revisions. The predominant dollar, material dollar amount is actually a decrease in the Chillicothe Road Resurfacing Fund, which was not done in the current year, 2021. The recommendation is to pass this with the amendment, as noted in the revised amended copy of the ordinance, due to the fact that we had a clerical error on the senior levy fund, we need to appropriate most of the drawdown from that fund to wages, as opposed to other, and you'll see that noted and read on that amendment. I would recommend, happy to answer any questions, I recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel, as amended ordinance, the order of business would be to suspend, amend, and approve as amended.
Mr. President, I would move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-079.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, President Landik. Again, this might be the Finance Director's show tonight, I'm going to defer to him on this one, and there is a tweak to this ordinance as well, and Mr. Malinowski, if you could explain further.
Thank you once again, Mr. Zampetro. Members of council, this is a cleanup ordinance, primarily it affects the current year appropriations. Firstly, there is an authorized temporary cash advance to, from the city's general fund in the amount of $777,066, and that's going to a CDBG grant fund, and also the Brooksville Road Reconstruction Fund that was awarded recently. In Section 2, there are numerous, several appropriation revisions. The predominant dollar, material dollar amount is actually a decrease in the Chillicothe Road Resurfacing Fund, which was not done in the current year, 2021. The recommendation is to pass this with the amendment, as noted in the revised amended copy of the ordinance, due to the fact that we had a clerical error on the senior levy fund, we need to appropriate most of the drawdown from that fund to wages, as opposed to other, and you'll see that noted and read on that amendment. I would recommend, happy to answer any questions, I recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel, as amended ordinance, the order of business would be to suspend, amend, and approve as amended.
Mr. President, I would move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
And we have a second?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-079 is approved. Ordinance number 21-0-080.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 21-0-0-066 to extend the period of temporary pay increase for the clerk of council and declaring an emergency.
And would the Law Director comment on why we're in need of this?
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, as you're aware, our ordinance 21-0-066 allowed for the temporary pay increase for the clerk of council until such time as the assistant clerk of council's position was filled, and then extending past that date of start for six weeks. The council is aware of a set of circumstances where the position was filled, thereby the six-week time period began to run. However, that individual opted not to continue in the position shortly after having taken it, and so a strict reading of 21-0-066 means within the next few weeks, the clerk of council's temporary pay increase will lapse, even though the assistant clerk of council position remains unfilled, and the additional job duties remain in place. So this is sort of a housekeeping item to allow for the extension of that temporary pay increase until such time post-six weeks of the date of hire for a new assistant clerk of council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
No.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marne.
We've been dealing with this position now, even with my conversation with Mr. Donovan, who's been on council for eight years, and we've had five different individuals take part of this position, and several months ago, I suggested to council that we look into going into a new direction with this particular position. Whether it would be with our full-time clerk, having it be a flex position, which it basically really has since October 12th, it's over a dozen times where people are leaving early, coming in late, which is fine, weekends making up, which is fine, the work is done, it's done excellent, it's done A-number-one. So it's proof right there, it's already been done as a flex position. So now here we are back to square one again, we're going to go to a full-time, we're going to extend the pay, now the talk is going to a full-time position, which we haven't got together in an executive session and discussed this, all together as a body, as we're supposed to, because it is a council employee. So when we sit down here after break, beginning of the year, I'm going to go back, and I'll have everything available, and I want you all to do some homework, too. Take a look at your emails, think back about how this has been since October 12th as a flex position, and there's a number of different ways that we could do with this position and move forward. As I mentioned in our last meeting, at the budget meeting, every one of these departments have undergone drastic changes, drastic in the last three years. From Mr. Zampetro, I saw him, like, I brought him in the meeting, plowing snow outside of City Hall, Assistant City Manager, to Community Development, I know they need extra help there, we just have another retiree coming up, Mr. Decker, I wonder if Jim's last day, by the way?
He's gone.
He's gone, all right? Okay, so he's already gone. So we have multiple positions to fill, we've got people doing two, three times the amount of work that they used to do years ago. It's time to look at this hard, get a good direction of this, and make different changes to our structure. Thank you.
This is a reminder, this ordinance is a reflection of the difficulty to find good help, basically, and does not address the full-time or part-time status of the position we're trying to fill, it does just extend temporary pay increase for the clerk of council.
But it is part of it, and that's my point.
Yes. Any further discussion? Counsel, it's your pleasure.
We have to continue our vote.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Landik. We have a second, we have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
No.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Resolution number 21-0-080 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-081.
An ordinance amending the Village on Maple subdivision development plan to change the location of the walking path within the subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, sir. I'll ask Director Mitchell to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Our members of council, just to give you a little bit of background and reference to this particular request, the applicant is proposing to amend the approved development plan for the Village on Maple, which was approved as part of the property rezoning in January 2016. The final subdivision plan was approved in May 2016 as well. As part of that final subdivision approval, a conservation easement was accepted by city council. The conservation easement included nine and a half acres of open space dedicated to the overall subdivision. As part of the approved easement restrictions, access to the conservation area is to be provided by adding a walking path within the conservation easement. Specifically, a three-to-foot wide walking path is to be installed along the southern property boundary of the conservation easement area, and located immediately adjacent to the northern property lines on Merkel Lane. This path is to be maintained free from obstruction and cannot be improved with a hard surface, but wood chips may be placed on the path as a surface for secure footing. As a part of the proposal to amend the development plan that was presented to Planning Commission in August, and then further again in November after revisions were prepared, the updated plans provide a walking trail now specifically along the north side of the existing detention basin that extends east along the edge of the pond. B benches, along with the community garden space, would be provided for the residents as shown in the sketches provided. The path would be constructed with materials consistent with the conservation easement requirements, as noted in the HOA's letter that was dated October 26. Upon review of the additional changes made to the plan, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the plan reviewed at their November 10th meeting by a four-to-one vote. This updated plan, labeled as "Staff Exhibit in Your Pockets," is included with their recommendations, along with three conditions that were made part of their recommendation and part of your staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them regarding this request.
Mr. Blake.
Kathy, what was the, the original path was supposed to go all the way along the north side of the development?
Yes.
And what was that path material consisted of?
It was supposed to be consisted, it was supposed to be only of wood chips, that was the only allowable material, and that is what is proposed for the new path, but just much shorter.
Nothing like limestone or anything like that, just wood chips?
No, they can't, not per the conservation restrictions.
Ah, okay, okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Donovan.
Kathy, the part running north and south along the road, is that wood chips, too? It's not part of this, is that, it's not going to be a sidewalk, concrete?
The part that's, that is along the road is concrete, but that's not part of the path that's required to be put in.
But that's going in concrete, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And the residents actually asked for this, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
This is their request?
This is their request, they weren't happy with the proposal of a walking path going in their backyard.
Uh-huh. Okay, thanks. You good with it? Yeah.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Landik.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.